We'll, we'll call the, uh, the special planning commission meeting of, uh, November twenty twenty-five to order. Ms. Lyons, I think we have a, uh, a full commission, uh, this evening, which is great. Uh, I'll call for approval of the, of the agenda as it's been, uh, presented.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, um, just confirming with Mr. Stone or Michelle, you, uh, that all general correspondence has been, uh, distributed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, first, before we move to the, the real meeting of the agenda, I wanted to welcome Cory Barber, who's a new member of the commission and look forward to working with you. Uh, sir, and learning from you. I just understand that he's a civil engineer by background and qualification, so that's a good fit for what we do and look forward to, uh, to working with you. Um, this is the time for general public comment. We don't have a lot of folks, uh, in the audience, uh, tonight, but, uh, if anyone would care to speak, um, on any topic of a general, uh, nature, now would be the time to do that.
Good evening. Uh, Mike Tinkie, two oh eight Vining Street. Thank y'all so much for meeting and extraordinarily for this, uh, event. Uh, I think it's important that we work together with the county council and seek to mirror, uh, the ordinances and, and historic overlays that, uh, they're doing and, uh, your deliberations today will, um, help determine that. I think it's important to honor the wishes of fifty-one percent of the people in that area that have been deliberating for over three years and are deliberating even next week on this very topic on the second reading. So, uh, we're in sync. The moratorium was in place until July, but we have, we're moving along expeditionously and thank y'all for meeting. Uh, I'd also like to thank Cory Barber. I've watched him as he served on the historic district preservation commission. He always did his homework. He always was well-prepared, uh, thoughtful in his, uh, deliberations. So, we're delighted to have you onboard and y'all have fun. Take care.
Thank you. Anyone else for the, uh, general public comment period? The two items on our agenda tonight are, uh, public hearings, so if you, someone would like to speak on either one or both of those, you will have an opportunity to do so. Okay? Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. So, this first text amendment before you, uh, is really kind of a fix to our zoning code, so I'm gonna fast forward before I get to the text amendment. Back when we, we completed our zoning code, it was adopted in January and it went into effect May first. Um, as we were going through the process of updating, the five-year update to the comprehensive plan, we realized that, as you can see here, a lot of these properties of, this is our urban growth boundary down here. And we realized that a lot of the properties beyond the urban growth boundary were, were recommended for settlement community, but we didn't have a corresponding, um, text amendment to match it. So, what we did during the final approval of the comp plan, town council made an amendment to, and you can see this blue area. So, instead of it being the orange settlement community, as you see to the south of Highway seventeen inside the urban growth boundary, they amended the future land use map to have those areas recommended for settlement communities outside of the urban growth boundary on the northern side to actually be designated in the future land use map as rural neighborhood. What we were missing from that was a corresponding text amendment in our zoning code. So, the zoning code, when you come in and you request an initial annexation and zoning, um, you, you, if you don't request a zoning, you're assigned a, a specific zoning based on what your future land use says. And what it said here was that rural residential neighborhoods shall be zoned as, and, and it went on to say what is appropriate for a settlement community, which would be a CC zoning. A CC zoning is, uh, three units to an acre, uh, twelve thousand five hundred square foot lots. It was not appropriate for the, for the settlement community land use designation beyond the urban growth boundary. So, if you can see, we've now added, will shall be RC one or RC two as further specified in one five six oh three six. We've also added caveat because we know that sometimes, uh, somebody will come in and request a zoning. So, say I, I wanna come in, I'm in this area and I say I wanna annex and I wanna zone R one. And, uh, town council at final reading, they approved my annexation, but they denied my zoning. It goes back to that automatic. So, we just wanted to cover our, all of our bases, whether you request a specific zoning or the zoning you requested is denied. We wanna make sure that outside of the urban growth boundi- boundary, you have an appropriate zoning. And so, based on this, so you would go to, whether it's RC one or R, RC two, if you're designated for that blue shade rural neighborhood. So, when you go to that section, it lays out whether you're gonna be RC one or RC two. And that's designated based on your location and, um, this map here. So, you can see this map is associated with the RC one, RC two. You're either gonna be RC one, which is one unit per ten acres, and I don't know that we have any, um, designated as that. Or you're gonna be RC two, which we are starting to have a lot more of those, which is one unit per three acres, which we, as we said, is appropriate in this area. So, this is the first text amendment before you tonight. Again, the new text is in red. And, um, there is no text here to be deleted at this time. And again, this is really a fix to make sure that the appropriate zoning is assigned outside of the urban growth boundary, um, to match that future land use. So, I'm happy to answer any questions with this amendment.
Michelle, if you would comment on this in context with, um, um, with the county zoning, um, code and their, their requirements. Because in so many ways, that's what motivated, at least for me, that's what motivated this special commission meeting to try to reconcile those.
So, let's go to a future slide, just so you can see. A lot of that area, I'm not sure what's on, but, got it, okay. A lot of the area beyond the urban growth boundary, the parts that we have below Highway seventeen that are CC are pretty comparable to the county's, uh, S three, Special Three Management District. But where we have designated those blue areas, the rural neighborhood, much of that in the county is zoned rural residential, um, which is one unit per three acres, thirty thousand square feet. Um, that's, again, this slide is in the, in the, for the next text amendment. But, um, right now, our, our rural residential and the county's rural residential are not comparable. Um, our rural resident, our rural conservation is comparable to their rural residential. What they are considering and has not had final reading yet is making this rural residential, instead of one unit per three acre, it would be one unit per one acre.
Okay.
Um, again, that's part of the next text amendment. But, but making, changing the future land use to rural neighborhood in this area, uh, and making this text amendment that I just went over does make this more consistent with what the county currently has in that area and how they have parcels designated.
Okay, that's helpful to know, I mean, cause again, that, that was my, in individually, that was my motivation for this meeting because what we don't wanna have, as we, there's been a pattern over the last, what, several months, maybe even longer than that, um, where we've had applicants who are either motivated or, motivated in one manner or another, uh, to pursue annexation, uh, denial or otherwise because of differences in, in our code versus that of the county. And I think to the extent that there's not a downside or a huge downside or, um, other consequences, I think it's important for us to try to reconcile that with the county to remove those, those motivations. Um, so. Anybody else?
Um, I, I have comments to what you just said, but it's actually the next text amendment that that really more refers to. So, I think the RC one and two automatic designation for those that are annexed without a designated zone or denied a zone, that is a separate issue, which I'm fine with.
Okay. Well, we've got Michelle. Any questions for her right now? If not, we'll, uh, this, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here this evening would like to speak on this particular issue, uh, now would be the time to do it. Yes, sir. If, if you would, come to the, come to the, um, the podium and state your name, address, and, um, you have two and a half minutes.
Thanks. I'm a slow talker. I'm not sure I can make that, but, uh, Eric Darrow, I live at five eighty-seven Hobcon Bluff Drive, not pleasant. Uh, I just, I was having trouble understanding where exactly that is. I can't see it very, very well, but, um, all the blue and the green and, uh, I'm part over track on Highway forty-one just outside the city limits. And I was just wondering how that would affect us if we were to choose to annex. I guess it's my bottom line question.
Yeah, so the staff could answer that in, in greater detail, but the, these tracks are, uh, along the northern reaches of, uh, of the town, um, around Highway seventeen as one approaches, uh, Almond Dock.
Okay, so it really won't affect the forty-one?
Not to my knowledge, Michelle, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the, uh, public hearing portion of the, uh, of this particular proposal, agenda item.
So, can I move to approve the recommenda- recommended change for this text amendment?
Any other discussion before we get to that? If not, ma'am, please go ahead.
Um, I'll move as stated that we approve the recommended text amendment as just explained.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve, uh, the, uh, proposal as it's been presented. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item five B, again, another zoning code text amendment.
So, this is an ordinance to, um, amend the density of the rural residential district. Um, and essentially what, right now, our rural residential district is a minimum lot area of twenty thousand square feet with a density of three units per one acre. It has been that way ever since. We didn't change any of this when we updated the zoning code. This has been in the code for many years. Um, and I, I think what prompted this really was, right now, as I said earlier, in the county, their rural residential district is one unit per three acres. They are considering, and we'll have final reading on Thursday night, changing their density of rural residential from one to three to one to one. Um, they are considering, it, it, it is co- and that's part of the ten-mile, uh, historic overlay district that was mentioned earlier. So, what the, what we are proposing then, and the three units per acre really is, and you can see, um, we don't have a one per one. So, it starts with the RC one, which is a ten-acre lot. We have RC two, which is three acres, and then it jumps to rural residential, which is three units per one acre. So, this would not only provide us with a one unit per one acre, uh, for the rural residential, which we don't have that in our category, but it would also be closer to, to what we anticipate the county is gonna approve on Thursday night. So, we kinda meet in the middle with that, and it would make it comparable to what, uh, what they end up adopting. And it would make our density more appropriate in these areas that are rural residential. And so, really, this is a very basic text amendment of crossing out the three and doing one unit per one acre in any property zoned rural residential. And I will say that we have very few of those properties, and they are outside of the urban growth boundary, so this is appropriate. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I had a question real quick, Michelle, on that. So, um, and, and my concern, I guess, would be, and maybe you just answered it, is, is this, is like the Hamlin area or areas off rifle range? Is there a lot of RR that we don't know about and impacting folks?
There's not. The only, we have about five or seven parcels maybe zoned rural residential, and they are all beyond that urban growth boundary. So, there are none this side of Darryl Creek Road and, and Beehive.
Okay.
They are outside of the urban growth boundary, yeah.
Has, um, has notification or anything gone out to any of those property owners, though?
No, because we're not proposing to rezone anybody's property. We are choo- we are proposing to change the density of an established zoning district. And so, we, I don't know, I'll confer with legal, I'm not sure there was any requirement. We met all of our public requirements as far as a text amendment, but, um, reaching out to people individually who may happen to have this zoning, that's not something that would be required.
Okay.
That answers it. I, I just, you know, for folks, I would just hate for somebody to come back and say, hey, well, I bought this land last year and I was told I could get three units per acre and now I can only put one house on it.
Sure.
Type scenario.
He said there's only ha- half dozen or so?
Yeah, there's not very many.
Yeah.
There's not very many parcels zoned.
I have a question. Um, if you go back to the map that shows the urban growth boundary and the properties outside of it, um, there's a portion of it that is part of the settlement community, you know, the extension of ten mile. And then there's a lot of other property that isn't settlement community. So, is the, is the county's, um, you know, impetus to change it to one per acre based on the concerns about the settlement community? Because I could see, I, I have a real problem conceptually with, um, going to one per acre on all of that area, all of that blue area. Um, be- only because it's outside our growth boundary, and I know we already have RR that's three per acre, which made no sense to me in the first place. But, um, I feel like it could add a lot of density, whereas if we have one per three acres, it's more consistent, I think, with the future land use in the comp plan for those, for the areas outside of the urban growth boundary. Um, but, but I s- I could see making an exception for any areas in our code that are in, or that are in the comp plan designated as a settlement community, if that's the concern. You know, in other words, if they really want one per acre. I don't know if they do.
I, I, I think I understand your concern, but I'm, I wonder if it's not, uh, addressed by this first text amendment. So, all that blue is recommend, is on the future land use is rural neighborhood. Um, if you're designated in the comp plan for rural neighborhood, you're gonna be zoned RC, RC one or RC two per this first text amendment.
Okay, so it's only if someone requests RR?
Correct. They have to specifically request RR and town council has to approve it. There will not be an automatic designation of RR. It, it will be RC one or RC two.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, and so they, they could, so if we had a designation, um, like an, I guess, would we even need an RR one and an RR two? Because RR two would be consistent with RC two, is what you're saying? Like, in other words, if we had a one per one and a one per three, the one per one doesn't exist now, so somebody could ask for that designation.
They could, and town council would have to approve it.
And there wouldn't be any reason to have an RR two, which is one per three acres, because that's RC two. In other words, th- they get that anyway.
This is redundant. It's, if we were to come up with an RR one and an RR two, we need to-
RR two would be the same as RC two.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I get it.
So, you can see here, um, how, sort of the evolution of how it would work.
Right.
And, and again, if you're, if you're outside of the urban growth boundary, that all that blue shade, you're not gonna be designated RR.
Right, okay. So, her, the, the issue I have now is just that because of the timing, we don't have the final reading yet for the county. That's in a couple of days or so, I think.
Right.
Um, so I hesitate.
That was staff's concern, too.
Yeah, I mean, I hesitate. I, I definitely think we need to change what we have because three a- three dwelling units per acre is not appropriate outside the urban growth boundary, in my estimation. But I would be more likely to keep it to one per three acres, which is what the county has had. Um, so I guess my feeling would be to recommend that we stick with that unless the county changes, because we don't know if the county's gonna do that yet, do we?
Uh, it's currently includes that amendment, so it'll have to get, it'll have to be amended at final reading to not approve the R, the one to one. Now, when you say stay the same, ours is three to one. Ours is not.
No, I don't mean stay the same. I meant mirror the county's current.
I see, okay.
The same that the county has now, you know?
Right, okay.
Not keep our current.
So, the, at first reading, it, they approved an amendment that would change their rural residential density, um, from one to three to one to one. It received second reading the other night, and it'll get third reading Thursday night, and they could amend it to remove that, but as of now, it's approved with it.
And do you know if it was a contentious, like, was it a vote that was pretty well split, or?
It was not split. There was only one or two, uh, council members that had concerns about the one to one.
I see.
Uh, the rest of council, really, because that one to one density is coming from the ten-mile community. They want it.
Well, that's what I was asking in the first place.
Yeah.
Is this what the settlement community is?
Absolutely. They do. They, one to three is not viable for them if they wanna subdivide and, and, and give property to, you know, their family. And so, the, the amendment and the, the desire to go one to one is coming from the settlement community. And if you go, I, I went and watched the, the recording of the, and that's what the council members who supported it, they said, listen, we, we're here to listen to the settlement community, the ten-mile community. If this is what they want, we don't wanna go, we don't wanna go against their wishes. Uh, but there was a couple of council members that had concerns about the increase in the density.
Yeah, that's why, like, when I started my comment, I was thinking, is there a way that we can go to one dwelling unit per acre for area designated in our map as settlement community outside the urban growth boundary? Because there is that area of ten mile that is outside, but not for the other. Because I do worry, you know, council changes over time, and I just worry about having any of these other areas asking to annex at one per acre, and that could significantly change the density outside the urban growth boundary and going up towards Almond Dock. So, I'm very sympathetic to the ten-mile community's concern. I don't wanna overcompensate and end up giving that as a possible. And I understand it has to be voted on by council. It has to be requested and voted on, but, you know, we get sometimes to where we are because council, you know, says yes to things like this, and I, I'm just not sure that I feel comfortable with it.
Yeah, so, so procedurally, we ought to talk about what our options would be, so I understand the concern, and I have the same. Um, I think we could bring this back up next, our next meeting. Is that true?
We could, we could amend what we've met.
So, we could wait, we could wait for the county council's, um, final vote after the third reading. And to the extent that, that their decision-making is consistent with what they have sort of projected thus far, we would just, you know, make a, make a final decision ourselves, uh, at that point.
Absolutely. The next, uh, regular meeting is December-
Tenth, which is within the thirty day.
Which is within the thirty day, so yeah, you could certainly do that.
Yeah.
The concern I have is that if they go with one dwelling unit per acre, they're doing it all over. They're not specifically saying just for that settlement community area, right? Anything, so someone on a parcel-
As long as it's in the county.
Right, and a lot of these properties are.
Still are.
Yeah.
And so, right?
I, Liz is saying she thinks it's just the ten-mile area. I, and that's something we could clarify at their meeting. Ten-mile overlay district.
Okay, because if it is, then we could amend our motion to recommend to limit that one per one to the settlement, because it would still be consistent with what county's doing.
Yep.
Because if they went more broadly to one per one, I wouldn't necessarily wanna follow what they're doing. You know, let them, let somebody argue that, you know, they want something more than that. But I, I would be happy to stay with the one per one on the settlement community, but not to extend it.
So, these areas here.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're recommended for settlement community outside the urban growth boundary.
Right.
You could be a one for one.
Correct.
But if you're here and you're recommended for rural neighborhood.
Right.
You would be what it says now, which is rural conservation.
Which is rural conservation two.
Yeah, one for three.
Yeah, that's how I feel. I think it's a slippery slope if we do one per one more broadly than what they're trying to address the ten, ten miles concern.
Well, back to the, the original point, that creates an incentive for people in itself.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think through what this text amendment looks like then. So, it is, oh, so the text amendment would not, if you're zoned rural residential, you are one unit per acre. If you are designated for settlement.
Community.
Community outside the urban growth boundary. This would be something somebody has to request. This is not gonna be anything automatic.
But that would give them the right to get that, that one per one. In other words, if someone owns property in the ten-mile community outside the urban growth boundary, and they wanna annex into the town, this would be available to them as a zoning designation, designation, right?
Well, it's available now.
Well, at three dwelling units per acre.
Right, but if you go to one per one, I'm ju- okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it's-
I'm, I'm having trouble reconc-
I think it's the same thing, really, Pam, I, cause I think, Michelle said that the only zonings we've got are properties that are outside the urban growth boundary now.
But we're talking about property that might get annexed that we don't have now.
Yeah, but if the county is mirroring that, I mean, we could defer, but it's-
She's saying they're mirroring it only for the ten-mile, though, and not for other property that's in the county that might wanna annex in and be denser. And honestly, my feeling about the coun- mirroring the county is, my concern is for the ten-mile community, not for just always mirroring the county.
Yeah.
They don't always do what we, what's best for us. So, I wanna do what's best for the ten-mile community, but I don't wanna get more dense, um, availability for county properties that are looking to annex in for developers that wanna then build more than our RC two would allow.
That are not in ten-mile.
Not in ten.
Not in ten-mile.
And that's not in the town. I mean, a lot of these properties are not town properties, so I've said.
Is there a discrepancy between the settlement in and out of the urban growth boundary? Like, if you're on the other side of that street, is it drastically different?
So, Liz just had a good point. When we amended the future land use, but at my, map at final reading, the motion was to change any settlement community.
As I recall it, yeah.
Outside the urban growth boundary to this blue shade, shade. So, we're trying to figure out, I guess, this part right.
If the map's even correct.
That may be the only part outside that we're-
It's not showing up up there.
Oh, the, my drawing, so-
The little green area south of seventeen beyond the urban growth boundary.
The stuff I just-
She circled it, yeah.
I did. Oh, you can see the circle?
Yeah, we can see it.
We're, we're unsure where that came from, but it should be that everything at, based on the future land use map that was adopted, everything that's assigned settlement community outside the urban growth boundary was supposed to be changed to this blue shade. So, I, I think we're just having trouble trying to figure out what this text amendment would mean.
Can I ask a question about the urban growth boundary line?
Yes.
And when that, what year that was established and when that could be reestablished? Because to, to Cory's point, the, the way that things look and appear and feel when you're going up and down this corridor to one side or the highway or the other, I feel, I feel like we're trying to beat sort of the finger here. And I don't like that. Um, a- as a matter of just how real estate can naturally be developed over time individually or by a larger group, I don't know, I just, this line just seems arbitrary.
I mean, there is a- There, there is a reason why the urban growth boundary is a line, though.
That's what I just asked. I said, why is it there and when, when was it established and when could it be reestablished as growth continues on? Because it should be and will be, so I feel like there's, I, I feel like we're probably being a little bit too granular in this.
We've, we've been, so that line has not moved in over twenty years.
I know.
Um, and it is kinda set in stone, if you will, intentionally. Um, it was initially established in the ninety-eight, ninety-nine comp plan. It got slightly adjusted in two thousand and three.
Okay.
Um, the difference there being basically ten-mile community. It initially was on the south side of the ten-mile community. It initially was on the south side of the ten mile community. There were reasons at that point in time that ten mile, I, I won't, I won't get into, I don't, I don't know motivations. So it changed at the, at the five year update, the county changed it, we followed suit. And that's where it's been, um, and the idea at the time, I mean, it was, it, you know, they, we looked at. Long-term growth, you know, projections and the fact you've got the forest and you've got the wildlife refuge. And, you know, you've got some real limits to what, if you're looking at development along this section of the coast. You've got some real limits, if you get a little bit further north, and you don't wanna go from hard one thing to hard nothing. And so there was an intent.
Softening.
To soften.
Sure.
And transition, um, and if you start moving the line, when do you stop moving the line?
Right.
So, um, so, you know, I'm not trying to butt in too much, but, um.
No, I appreciate the clarity.
My understanding of the county's deliberations, um, with ten mile, basically it's been north side of seventeen and south side of seventeen. If you will, with north and south, you know, um, cuz nothing's north-south in this town. Um, but, so anything on the southern side of seventeen has been, as you were saying, I think, considered more of a three to. Three, three to one, make sure I get it right, not one to three. Um. Is there, let me just ask, is there, the ten mile community is defined, it has a historic.
Yeah, and it includes the sections on the north side.
So can't we just define it, regardless what this map shows? Could we define it as designated as the ten mile community historic just overlay or whatever? You know, like, in other words, it, it may not be exactly this, but whatever the ten mile community is, it is a defined area. And that's kind of what I would be looking to protect, and that's fair.
And that's, that's what we plan to do once they adopt, uh, we've been directed by council, the moratorium's in place.
Right.
We are to follow the council's process, what they adopt, we will then look at and figure out. How, how do we want to, how do we wanna work with them on this? Because it's gonna be their historic overlay district, but there are going to be parcels that are gonna be annexed in to the town. And pulled out of the middle of that, and how are we going to deal with those parcels? So, so you're right, we will eventually get there, but we're waiting to see what the county does.
And I guess, just to circle back to my original point, I have no problem recommending that we mirror that for the ten mile community. But not that we overextend it to any area beyond the urban growth boundary. Because there may be other county properties that have nothing to do with the ten mile that wanna annex in and wanna go to RR. And I would prefer that not be one per acre, I'd prefer that to be one for three acres. Because it is, we want a, a more rural transition out of the town, you know, so.
Okay, so if you, I mean, if you can make a motion and then we can. Of what that looks like in the text amendment, and then we can move forward from there. Um, cuz I, I'm, I wanna make sure I understand it, so.
So I think I would move, and I, my.
Wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett, we're in the middle of a public hearing?
Oh, we need to have a public hearing.
And then the other, the other issue would be is if we're keeping the public hearing open to the next meeting?
I don't know, but we need to hold the public hearing, so, yeah.
Under any circumstance, I have a question for you. Yeah, well, well, she can, she'll answer you, let, let's go to the public hearing first, Gary, and we'll go back. This is a public hearing, we have just a few people in the audience tonight, but if somebody would like to speak on this particular matter. Uh, item five B, now would be the time to do that. Yes, sir.
So, again, Eric Ireland, five eighty seven, Hopkamp Bluff Drive, Mount Pleasant. So, um, get a little bit confused with all the different RRs and one to three, three to one. Um, my concern is still with my property on highway forty one, just outside the town limits. Right now, if we were to annex in, it's my understanding that we would annex in, uh, is, if we annex in as residential. It would be three units per acre, uh, but what I'm hearing is that this might affect the ability to, to. To annex in that density, is that correct?
I don't know if you can answer, we're not supposed to really have.
We're, we're really not.
Oh, sorry, sorry, um.
Understand your sensitivity.
So you can't answer any of my questions, or, or does this area that they're talking about affect that area? I know, I know she said the other, take a minute.
Peter.
Yeah.
Sir.
I see, our rules don't allow us to have conversations in the public hearing, that's why we're hesitating.
Okay, well, I would be opposed about that.
Is there anyone else to speak during the public hearing? David, if you would, could you advise on our ability to, uh, keep the public hearing open for, uh, some period? Or are we compelled to close it this evening?
David, I need you at the mic, thank you.
I've, I've never understood this, at least with, to not, to my satisfaction.
If, if you keep it open, um, we have thirty days.
Right.
To make the decision.
Yeah.
Um, I don't recommend keeping them open, the public hearing's been advertised, you can close it, but you can still carry on your deliberation. And continue the remainder until the next meeting, if you wish to do that.
We can continue on with our discussion, but not, but not invite others to speak, okay?
That sounds simple.
And, and, um, and why, why do you recommend that we close the public hearing?
Uh, because I believe we'd have to readvertise it.
Oh, I see, so the inconvenience and the expense of readvertising.
Well, I, I, I don't, I'm not sure that we, you know, we, that's my position, I think we do. And the other limitation, what, what is your?
We do, we do, cuz the next meeting's the tenth, so. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, we, we have a thirty day window, so it's within the thirty days, I don't know about the advertising.
Right.
Right, yeah. So, so we do have, we, we do have that time, so it's in that window between, we've got enough time for the thirty days, but also enough time to advertise.
Yeah.
In this instance, we do.
I guess just, just for discussion purposes, I'm not sure, what, what is it, an opportunity for people to come in and speak on the issue? Is that why you'd wanna keep it open? Okay.
We haven't gotten anybody now.
I, I'd like to make a motion, I know Pam, you were starting one, but.
Go right now, go right now.
Get Gary, get Gary still has a question.
I have a question for you, before we get too hard. So this is kind of an off the wall question, and it may not be appropriate to talk about it right now. But what about the republic property? If the town ends up buying this republic property, how will these new zoning, will these new, new zoning laws have any effect? Because that's a huge piece of land, and, and have we thought about the possibility of, of what will happen if the town is successful in buying its republic property? And how is zoning may or may not affect that?
So the areas we're talking about are outside the urban growth boundary, so this is Daryl Creek Road, highway seventeen, and Beehive. Um, so. Anything off highway forty one is going to be within the urban growth boundary, presumably, yes. So, so to answer your question, no, these changes do not affect anything up highway forty one, which I should have made clear to.
Okay.
To the gentleman here.
Okay. Okay, so Adam and Pam have.
Mr. Bennett, I think.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
We're just talking here because what is being presented to us is a little bit, um, aside. There is a question as to if, if there's a motion made, we'll have to hear the motion.
Right.
But it's substantively different than what was advertised, we'd have to readvertise it again.
I see, so we may have to do that regardless, is what I'm hearing, okay, so.
And that's, and that's not a problem, there's, there's enough time to do that, but we would need to hear the motion and how distinct it is from what is currently advertised.
Got it, makes perfect sense, and that, that was part of my sensitivity, it wasn't just keeping it open for opening, keeping it open and safe. It was ensuring that we check the boxes for whatever it is we, um, want to vote on, yeah.
David, do they need to make a determination on keeping the public hearing open pre- before a motion is made?
Give me one minute on that.
Okay.
I search in motion.
But, but while, while he's doing that, so Adam and Pam had, uh, at least suggested a motion.
Pam, you reverse, please, I mean, mine's more simple, but go ahead.
At this point, uh, we've had public comments.
Right.
There's board commission questions, um, and then applicant staff response, which in this case is more formality. And then the public hearing is closed, and then there's deliber- deliberation and a motion. So if you wanna keep it open, then that determination needs to be made now before any motions.
Well, I'll have to leave that to the persons making the motions, right? Because if you feel like it's within the bounds of what's been, been.
I don't, I haven't seen the advertisement, so maybe you should tell me about what was advertised.
Well, it would've been, it would've been advertised as it's.
No, I don't think so, I think it was advertised broadly.
I, I'm not saying it's a risk, but of course, i- if the, if the public hearing is kept open and we get to the next meeting. And there is a motion that is made that is outside the boundaries of what has been advertised, we'll have to go through that process again. We're willing to do all this, I just want you to understand the, the scheduling, right?
And so, can, can someone, I, I didn't read the advertisement, Peter, does it read, uh, as it's stated here in the agenda or very close to it?
It's very close to that, but I'll say this, um, it is centered on decreasing density above the urban growth boundary. But if you begin to talk about mirroring the overlay and having a joint overlay, that's not something that was contemplated at all. So, we're getting into territory where we would just need to, uh, write another advertisement just to.
Okay.
Encapsulate all of that.
So I suppose we've got actually several options, one would be to keep the public hearing open, um, for that, that purpose. One would be, um, to either, um, approve or deny, um, any motion that's more narrowly specific to what's stated here, right?
And then that would get republished for another.
For another, and then if we wanted to, that's right. Um, and then we, we would also have the benefit of waiting to confirm whatever it is that city, that county council, uh, adopts, uh. You said just in a few days, right?
Yeah, they're supposed to have final reading on Thursday, the twentieth, so later this week. Um, and like Peter said, the, the ad talked about, it was specific to the rural residential zoning district, townwide. That's a townwide district, although we only have a few parcels zone that outside the urban growth boundary, and it was to decrease the density. So, if we want to, and I, and I know that we do want to, we want to look at what the county adopts. And how are, how are, what are we gonna do with that? I, I'm concerned about having a plan together to mirror their plan for December tenth. This, it took them three years to come up with that, so this makes, this makes me a little nervous. Uh, bringing back a plan to you to mirror the county's adopted plan that they adopt on Thursday.
What, what did they move to, like, how, what was their motion that was approved that's going to the third reading? Like, because wouldn't that be what it is we would be doing, or?
Well, that's, it's, it's a mo- I don't.
But weren't you saying they were just doing it as to the settlement community, no?
I'm sorry, I don't.
They're creating a new overlay district for the settlement community.
They're creating a new?
So it's, it's not just this density, it's a whole range.
It's an entire architecture stan- it's everything.
Okay.
This is just a very small piece of it, it's an entire zoning overlay.
Okay, I see, but, and there's, and the density is part of that overlay, a part, piece of that overlay.
To, to increase it one to one, correct?
Okay.
That's just a very small piece of it, it's a, it's a pretty long plan, that took them three years to come up with.
I see.
So we wanna, you know, be thoughtful.
They're refining it, yeah.
They have a historic, uh, district designation. They are now looking to have third reading and adopt a zoning overlay to create standards for that historic district.
That's helpful, yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay. So with that, with those parameters, um, we probably ought to entertain a motion to determine the degree to which.
Oh, you show your cards first. Well, I, I feel like what you're gonna say is, uh. More acutely focused on one side of the road versus the other, so I'm interested to, to hear that, cuz I, I.
Well, I mean, I, I'm really not sure how to make a motion now, given everyone's concerns, but.
Is the public hearing closed, or not closed?
Or we have to continue it, can I just say what I might move if I were to move before we go to close the public?
I think that's the best way, is to discuss possible options.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I've been waiting.
So, because I don't wanna physically move, but I wanna tell people what I was thinking, so I would be inclined. To make a motion to, um, approve of this change in front of us for RR. As it applies to, um, the ten mile, the properties within the ten mile historic overlay. As, as shown by the county or as designated by the county. So, in other words, if there is something across the street that is part of the overlay, you know, part of the historic ten mile overlay. Then it would be part of what this would apply to. If it's not, if there's a property outside of that, then it wouldn't, it, it seems kind of simple to me, but I don't, everybody looks a little confused, so.
Now, what, what a motion such as that require?
So that would be a, essentially a joint town-county overlay, and that would require.
Another.
You want an RR density of one to one in some areas, but, but one to three in others, that's what you want, correct?
That's correct.
And you're using the ten mile as a boundary, right? Um, can you?
Were we still unsure of the shading?
I'm sorry?
Were we still unsure of the shading of this map that we're looking at?
I'm so sorry.
It's okay if we are.
I'm.
This is how it was adopted.
Okay.
Um, I don't rec- you know, you know how, I don't recall precisely what the motion, how it was worded. To get us to this point, but I'm assuming we did what it said, and so that's.
Well, I think, Adam, I'm putting words in his mouth, so stop it, but I think you're asking, can we identify the ten mile community on the map, right? Yeah.
I also had a question, cuz somebody had, um, she had described the boundary as Beehive, but it's drawn here as Theodore.
I'm sorry, I meant Theodore.
Okay.
Sorry, it's.
It's actually the e- the edge of those properties on the north side.
It's, okay.
Okay, and ten miles.
It includes the properties on both sides of Theodore, right?
Both sides, okay.
Um, and so, miss.
Miss Ireland.
So you would be agree, your motion would suggest that we could take RR to one to one. But only in the area that would fall into the footprint of whatever the counties, um, approves as their, as the county's historic ten mile.
How, how we define ten mile?
Our urban grow- outside of the urban growth boundary.
Okay, outside of the urban growth boundary.
Right? I mean, that's all we're talking about.
Cuz some of it is within the urban growth boundary.
Yes, so I, we'd wanna make that distinction.
Okay, so.
Okay, and then RR anywhere else in the town would be one to three.
Right, if people, if property were being annexed in outside the urban growth boundary, asking to go to RR, it would be.
And it was not in the ten mile overlay, then it would be.
What?
One to three.
One to three.
One to three, just like an RC two.
Right, and I'm not sure we need that, if we have an RC two, maybe RR would just apply to that air, I don't.
I think that's.
One way or the other is fine with me, I don't know, I don't, I don't like being redundant, but if we had to be, I would be.
So that, that would require extra text that we didn't add, that we, David. It's, so the ad said to reduce density.
Sorry to make it so complex.
The, the definite, so ma'am, what you're suggesting is to use the county overlay in our circumstance solely as a boundary?
Yes.
And that would change the area, right? So we would need to readvertise that, because it.
Because it, it doesn't.
It wouldn't.
Provide to Mister Bennett's concern, doesn't provide notice to people who very well could be affected by it. Legally, and this may not be much of a concern, but, but I will share it, is that if that overlaid boundary changes, that, o- our zoning is not going to expand, our zoning area is not going to expand and contract with that. So I just point that out for future reference, that i- i- if they decide the county at some point, whether three, five, ten years, decides to either reduce or expand that area, our zoning rules will not match that. It would take further action by the town for that. So I just say that as a matter of congruity.
So I think what I just heard is that we're not even eligible to vote on Pam's motion as it was articulated, or proposed motion. It would have to be republished.
My immediate answer is because it changes the actual boundaries that were advertised. That is a bright line.
Yeah, sure.
Concern for notice.
Okay, right. Makes, makes sense to me. I just wanted to confirm that, what, okay.
I mean, but without a motion, we can still report to council, and we have one council member here, as to what we're thinking. I mean, because they're gonna meet, aren't they? Or are they gonna meet before we do? Yeah, we're going into something.
I'm not worried about, our council, I'm worried about the county council.
No, but I, I know, but I just meant.
So committees of council will meet, I believe it's Monday, December first.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, I know, but that, that's, well, it'll happen in just another month. I mean, we gotta make the right decision for us, for the town. And, you know, council can follow along after.
But if the public hearing is kept open, there would not be a recommendation for the December first meeting? We don't need to keep it.
That's correct.
Yeah.
We don't need to keep it open if we're gonna republish a new.
Right. That's right. Now, well, now that's, that's for the proposed motion that you've suggested.
That's a hypothetical motion she just made.
A hypothetical motion, right, a hypothetical motion. And then Adam may have a hypothetical motion too.
Are we still open?
We're still open at this very moment.
So you could tell us what you're thinking.
Okay.
Hypothetically.
We, we should, in my opinion, I think we should defer to collect more information, and that's what, that's what we need to do.
Okay. So then we could, what we really will do then is close the public hea- and this, this is a, um, straw man. We would close the public hearing because this matter, we, we're, we're, we're saying that we don't like the way that the, um, the public hearing was advertised and defined. And so we believe it's appropriate and best that we redefine that for a following, follow-on meeting, right? So if that's the case, then we will close the public hearing as defined by the way that five B is presently articulated. Okay? Now, unless there's a motion to be made where people would say, hey, let's just move forward with the way that.
Prove it as is.
Prove it as is, or some modest modification of the way it is.
You, you could recommend approval of a lower density. So right now, it's three to one unit, three units to one acre. You could say, we want one to one, you could say, we want one to two, we want one to three.
Right.
That would all be.
Anything lower, yeah.
Anything lower.
Well, I, I will say that the, the current three to one makes no sense, especially given the fact that the lot area is twenty thousand square feet. So you physically can't have one parcel with three units on it, because an acre's like forty-three thousand or so.
That's by design.
That's the minimum, yeah.
That's the, kind of the point, of having the larger lots, yeah.
Right. It, it just isn't possible anyway. Um, I mean, I would ask other people's opinion. I wouldn't mind approving this, but I would like to go forward and to still narrow it. I mean, so I don't know whether, you know.
Well, you, you could, we started this process trying to mirror what we think will happen in the future.
Right.
So deferring to get the information in the future seemed logical.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, if that's the case, then my inclination is to close the p- public hearing for five B as it's, as it's presently defined, or it has been defined since it was, um, advertised. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. So I'm, I'm hereby closing the public hearing for five B, okay? Thank you. All right. So it sounds like we've got two or three persons that, that have stated, um, interest in, um, I won't call it deferring, but redefining, um, this particular agenda item, um, for a future date. Um, and we'd like to have as, as additional information at a minimum, whatever it is that county council ultimately votes upon. And you can bring that back to us, uh, on the, on the tenth of December.
Right.
Is there other information that we, we like for staff to collect?
I'm a little rusty.
I, I do wanna understand the, the, um, the map a little bit more depth, you know, where exactly is ten mile? I, I, I mean, I, we, we know it when we drive through it on the periphery, but not exactly where.
Exactly.
It, it starts and stops. It is. Okay, okay. Thanks for that, Kim. Yeah.
And I feel comfortable not moving on this, because if somebody were between now and when we meet next, were to ask for this, they would be denied, and it would go to RC two, cause it would be outside the urban growth boundary. So I think we're safe on that front, so.
So, uh, Mister Paccherini, in terms of procedurally, we're, I think, choosing to, to no vote. How, how do we process that?
Yes, sir. So there's, I think there's two ways. There can either be no recommendation, you've provided instructions and we'll move on, or, uh, the commission can, could, uh, take a no vote, or, or a yes vote, a recommend, so there's three options. No, no recommendation, yes vote as to, as it is currently stated, or a no vote with the instructions that we will re-advertise and bring it back as requested.
I'd, I'd like to offer, I, I don't want us just to re-advertise again and get it wrong. Um, I'm wondering if, and I'll, I'll offer this out, and let me know. So December first committees, I will take BA, or five A, that you recommended approval for that fix. What I can do is, uh, present to committee five B, not ness- whether or not there's a recommendation, but the concerns, and then we can, I, by then, and then your December tenth meeting, so I can fill the planning committee in on this discussion. At the December tenth meeting, we can come back to you all with an update on what the county adopted. And then we can, based on some committee input and what the county adopts, we can re-advertise and make sure.
And then for January, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, that, that would be about as deliberate a way of going about this as I can imagine, yeah. Do, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Family concerned, Corey, everybody? So I think what we're doing is we're taking a. Where it's a no vote without recommendations.
But instruction given to staff.
But instruction given to staff, okay.
Just, just, just to be clear, if, if there's no motions, it's no action was, no action, no recommendation. And Michelle will follow up as she indicated.
Yeah.
If there is a, a motion to deny, and then there is a denial, it would go with a recommendation of denial as is, but with the instructions as, as Michelle just said. And there is a third option. I just say it for, for, there is a, someone could vote to, for approval.
But, yeah, so we, we still achieve our objectives, and that may be cleaner. So maybe what we do is we entertain a motion to deny, but with recommendations for follow-up.
Or approve or approve.
Deny as, as, as written.
Or approve as written, but wanna get it better the next time.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm saying if somebody were to come now and ask for RR, it's three dwelling units per acre. So if we approve it, then at least it would be going to them at one per acre, knowing that we would be getting more information to make it more refined the way that we were suggesting. That's the only thing I'm thinking of, is that, you know, rather than just denying it, which says we don't like this at all. So I'm not sure why that would not be okay. Is there a problem, David, in terms of further refining it based on the information we're getting, you know, what they're gonna be getting to us, but approving this for now?
Uh, you can do any of those, but all three, uh, are the options that I mentioned that we discussed are, are appropriate. I, uh, again, the council, in any circumstance, has the absolute right to say, we're gonna do what we feel is appropriate.
Right.
I, I will say, I, I don't know that I've ever seen that happen. I think with y'all's requests, reasonable. Um, I, I'm, I'm not sure, well, I don't wanna lean into whatever the appropriate vote is. Um, but all of them.
Are reasonable.
Will get you where you wanna go.
Yeah, that's, that's my, that's my feeling too. So I'm trying to think in terms of messaging, is there? We can, here, but any, any of them?
Does the moratorium affect if someone wants to re?
Sorry, I can't hear.
Wants to come in and then rezone, right? That, that, that affects? No, the moratorium is prohibiting the subdivision of land in the historic districts. Um, any lots, anything over four lots. Um, so that.
That would be the only instance where someone could ask to rezone.
Right.
But I'm, nevermind.
Yeah, so.
I'm confusing myself.
Yeah, it's.
I guess, you know.
But as David said, I, you can, you can make whatever recommendation you make, whether it's approval, defer, or denial, I can still, at the committee meeting.
Explain what our concerns.
And we can get further direction, and we'll have the results. That can come with an a- approval or a.
I guess, yeah, I mean, I guess I'll.
Well, and that, that's, that's the more conservative approach, cause it at least redu- reduces them. Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I, I would second that motion, I think.
Okay.
Wait, sorry. You can restate that. I'm with your proof.
Yeah. It's approved.
As presented?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And Mister Bennett, you seconding?
I can, yes.
So, so for discussion, I guess we're at that, so, but Miss Ireland, what you're asking for, approve the motion as presented, but then you wanna re-entertain, uh, the subject again in January, post the county's, uh, decision, final decision to even more restrict it or align it, or just keep it as is?
I guess aside from my motion, what I would be asking Michelle and Peter to do is to come back with us? Come back to us in December or January, whenever it's viable, to, um, advise, um, the limitations or the parameters of the county councils overlay as to the boundaries that it affects, so that we could further refine the zoning to address that area, the ten mile area. That's really, and again, it may be that we decide not to do something at that point, but we'd be asking for more information in case it can be further refined.
Okay.
So it would be a separate subject matter?
Yeah, exactly.
I would have to promote that, or, you know, advertise it that way.
This would fix it for now, and then I'd like to further discuss it, depending on what information they come back with.
Okay. Can certainly do that. We can come back December tenth with additional, what, what came out of the county process, and we'll know more by then, exactly.
Adam, Michelle, you're giving that. What do you think?
Are we taking that, that count?
Not yet. I just wanted to see, test, test your.
I just wanted to ask a question. So if we, if we approve this, are, is anyone in the settlement, uh, you know, designation going to be upset because now they can't develop it as dense as?
What we've been told is they would prefer.
They want the less dense, okay.
Right.
I guess what they want is the difference in the county, correct? Is the, the one to three acres in the county, so they want the one to one.
This, the ten mile community overwhelmingly has asked for the one to one. The county has them now. I kinda say we're meeting in the middle. The county currently has them at one unit per three acres. We have them at three units per one acre. This text amendment gets us one to one, and they're proposing to amend one to one. So we kinda meet in the middle. But it is coming from the ten mile community, the one to one. And right now, the current draft that's had two readings includes that, that density that would get us the same.
And then my last question is, I'm a little rusty on the zoning. This does not affect anything with like accessory dwelling units?
No.
Okay.
My question is about, earlier you had mentioned, there's a few people who had not been notified, or like, didn't have to notify them. Will people who do have more than one unit on their property now be grandfathered into the old laws? Or will they have to get rid of the units that are there?
Yeah, if somebody is currently zoned rural residential, and they happen to have, uh, three units per one acre, which it doesn't exist, um, but if they did, and we have, and town council approved this, and they exceeded that density, they could remain as they are until they chose to make changes to their property, and then they would have to come into compliance. But we don't, we don't have any properties out there that are developed under RR three to one, so.
Shall we vote?
Yeah, so if there's, uh, if, if everybody's comfortable and we've had enough discussion, we will take a vote. All right? Motion made and seconded. So, um, Lynette, you have it on the record? You okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay, got you, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed to this.
Okay. Motion carries eight to one. All right.
All right.
I think we are adjourned, thank you.
That was painful, but thank you. Thank you.